Tonight it's November 27th, 2012 at 6 o'clock or thereabouts. We're located here at the City Hall at 116 West Bridge Street. So at this time I'm going to call this meeting to order. And to get us started, I'm going to ask Councilman Tony Allen to lead us in our invocation, and we'll follow that up with the Pledge of Allegiance and the Texas Pledge. Pledge if you would, please rise.
Lord, we thank you for everything you give us and say today. We pray that this meeting can happen so your will be done. All of the patients here, not everyone, but you, pray for our family, for everybody here, forgive us for our sins, and exchange tonight.
Amen. And the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the Texas flag, please.
On our Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
You may be seated. Council members, you were given a copy of the minutes from October 16th, November 13th, and November 19th as part of the consent agenda. In reviewing the minutes from October the 16th, I'd like to request some amendments. In section 12-169, if I can point you towards the very first paragraph, in the middle of it, it says, "Over 2,000 acres of land in the cities ETJ." We need to replace the word "cities" as plural with "cities" with an apostrophe S. Also, also in the last sentence of that same paragraph, it says, "Last meeting." Strike the word "last meeting" and just put in the word, "There were a few areas of discussion at the last meeting." In the next paragraph, under the first sentence, it says, "Wayne Olson, attorney, addressed the council. From the city's perspective, is to have the developer agree." Add the word "is." And my next one comes out as a spelling issue. It's also in that same section, but if you look at the highlighted words of Kirk Wilson, Carrollton, Texas District Consultant, in two paragraphs up above it, the word should read "account," and what we have in the packet, it says "a-count." Two separate words. I know this may sound like something that shouldn't be addressed, but it is for a permanent record. In 12-160, I'm sorry, 12-175, if you look down at the very bottom of that, there's a second motion, discussion continued. It says, "Second motion, Mayor Pratt said there was a motion on the floor. When I stated that motion, it should have reflected what Councilman Parsons had stated in the first motion, as far as what the dollar amount was. If you look at the first motion, it states that the amount of $2,325,000 was part of the motion, and when I stated the motion again, I said $2.195 million dollars. So I'd like to have that portion of it changed to read $2.325K, as that would reflect what I think the intent of the council was, was to follow up with that motion. Further on down, there's a third motion, and you'll see the amount also reads that on that motion, it states that entertain a motion to approve a contract with Scott Tucker Construction in the amount of $2,195,000. Change that to read as well to $2,325,000. And I think Councilman Tyra would like to add a little bit of language to the same segment. Is that right, Councilman Tyra?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Under the same agenda item 12-175, just a couple of grammar and then the additional wording. The last paragraph before the first motion, just so it reads understandable, "Citizens of Granberry," this is the very last paragraph before the first motion, "the third sentence down, Granberry needs to know that we have been paying the debt payment on this since 2007," so they can understand. Since 2007, just add "since 2007," and the other word there is, the next sentence, Tyra said, "He and others in the city got this $1.2 million thought process." Please add "because" that was the amount of money left over in the 2007 bond. That's it for right there, Mayor. And then if you'll notice, when your third motion was made, after the second motion, there is an item that says, "Discussion continued." I wanted to insert what I stated because I believe that language that I brought forward made the third motion come forward, and you guys can clarify it for me. But basically, I said that I wanted to make sure, because the mayor used the word in his second motion, "develop," and I wanted to use what Mickey had brought forward. Mickey used the word "approve." And so we want to get this contract done, so I asked that this language would say, and basically here's how I'm stating it, is I continue, "There is no language that would say that we have to go back and negotiate anything. It's done." Simply put. Did you get that, Dee? Basically, that's the language, because what...
That's what I'm saying.
Okay, good. Just add that there, because we're wanting to make sure that Mickey said approve it, the mayor said develop it in his second motion, so we got him to correct it in the third motion. Mayor, that's it. Thank you so much.
All right. Any other amendments or changes that need to be brought to our attention regarding any of the minutes that we have on the consent agenda?
After the third motion and the discussion continued, the first line there says, "Council, person Parsons stated that the total bond package of 2007, not 207 million."
All right.
Bond package of 2007 was 15 million, which we spent prior to Council's power coming into the council.
Good catch. Anything else from council regarding these minutes? Entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilman Tyra, requires a second.
Take it.
Second for Mr. Hewlett. Any further discussion? All in favor of approval of the consent agenda as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Well, that brings us to our newly elected council taking oath of office. And before we do that, I'd like to give Councilman Tyra one minute to talk as he steps down. Can you do that?
Yes, Mayor, we can. Thank you, thank you. No, I just wanted to thank the city of Granberry. I really enjoyed my service for the nearly four years I was able to serve this community. It's a tough job, as you all see us up here in behind the scenes, we work as well, and it's very rewarding sometimes, and sometimes it's not so rewarding, but I do appreciate the life experiences I got out of that. I want to say that I was very thankful to be able to serve with, for one year, with prior Mayor David Southern and Jake Caraway, and I've been able to serve two years with the mayor and Mr. Allen, and in the total of my time, I've been able to serve with Mr. Parsons and Perkel, and then this last year, I've been able to serve with Ben Hewlett, and I appreciate being able to serve with them and the things that we got accomplished. With that said, I want to honor Gary. So Gary, I'm going to take this down, put your name up there, and I'm going to step down from the podium. Congratulations.
So I'd like to invite our municipal judge, Judge Ben Makin, to come forward to administer the oath of office to our newly elected councilperson, Gary Couch, and our reelected councilperson, Mr. Laurel Perkel.
In solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute the duties of the office, our city councilperson place three, our city councilperson place five, of the city of Granberry, of the state of Texas, and will to the best of my ability, reserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and the laws of the United States, and of this city, shall help me God.
Congratulations, welcome to the family. Congratulations. And guys, I've got a certificate of election to award you in honor of your accomplishment at the polls. Mr. Perkel and Mr. Couch.
Thank you, Junior. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, so that's good enough.
All right. This brings us down to our deliberation agenda. Item number one, consider an award of a contract, construction contract to CST Construction LLC, PO Box 1557, Granberry, Texas, 76048, based on their low bid of $264,835 for the construction of a 100-foot by 100-foot air evac maintenance hangar project. The city did advertise for this project, opened bids on October 9th at 2:00 at the Granberry Municipal Center, and the lowest responsible bidder for the project, as reviewed by EHT, our engineering firm, was CST Construction LLC, at a cost of the $263,900, including the ad alternate. Their low bid came in at $264,835. The ad alternate had to do with a hoist lift, service lift for the air evac, which they will be reimbursing the city for in the amount of $935. There are ramp fund monies, which is a 50/50 grant that will be applied towards this. By the time it's said and done, the city will be reimbursed in the amount of $47,780 for our hangar construction expense out of ramp funding in the fiscal year 2013 ramp fund program. With that being said, I entertain a motion at this time to award a construction contract with CST Construction LLC of Granberry, Texas, for the construction of a 100-foot by 100-foot air evac maintenance hangar in the amount of $264,835.
So moved.
We have a motion by Mr. Allen, a second by Mr. Perkel. Any discussion regarding this? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Brings us to item number two, consider an award bid number 12-13-01 for a 100-foot by 100-foot storage hangar, financing from First National Bank for $284,790, for a T-hanger complex refinancing from Community Bank for the amount of $574,094.46, along with a 100-foot by 100-foot maintenance hangar financing from First National Bank in the amount of $188,705. These financing contracts are presented for each project listed above based on the lowest bid of interest rate offered by each financial institution. If you'll recall, council members, we had some discussion about this going out, jobbing it out to Kansas City Firm, if I remember right, and it was thought to bring it back, try to get some local bidding to see if there was competitive local bids, and what we have before us are lower bids than what was previously discussed. The rate of interest for the first financial financing for the 100-foot by 100 is at 3.35%. The refinancing of the T-hanger, which still has an eight-year term on it, is going to be at 3%, and the financing for the 100-foot by 100-foot maintenance hangar, which we just heard about, would be at 3.35% also by First National Bank. Entertain a motion to award the bids to First National Bank for the hangar project, 100-foot by 100, and for the maintenance hangar, 100-foot by 100. Each one of those bids is $284,790 and $188,705 respectively, and the T-hanger complex refinancing by Community Bank in the amount of $574,094.46. Needs a motion, please.
So moved.
We have a motion moved by our junior councilman. First off the block, very good. Gary Couch, and we need a second, please.
Second, sir.
A second by Mr. Parsons. Any further discussion regarding this financing?
I've got one question.
All right, Mr. Allen.
Wayne, what was the interest rate on the one we refinanced?
Before?
Yes.
I believe it was like 6.5%, wasn't it, in that range, Ava? Yeah. Oh, 5.4%, I'm sorry. 5.4%. It's still good.
Thank you.
Any other questions, discussion? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Brings us down to item number three. This has been an ongoing item that we just put out there for discussion. Discuss and approve the potential options or contracts regarding the completion of the Opera House redevelopment project, taking any action deemed appropriate by council regarding the Opera House project. Just to give you some ideas to where we are, I would like to mention that, as you just heard in the minutes, there was a need to amend the minutes to reflect a $2,100, I'm sorry, $2,325,000 contract award to Scott Tucker. In the contract that was penned, it was based upon what the motion was voted on, which was $2,195. As such, I did not sign that contract, and today I can say that I'd be willing to sign the contract. The contract was an award to Scott Tucker Construction to become the design-build firm. And I'd like to give you just a little bit of background as to why we're going a different direction. We're needing to sever our relationship with Brian Gaffin and the design-build contract that we originally put out there, and we awarded a contract on February 17th to Gaffin Construction to bring forward a design-build contract scheme for the Opera House project. In July 26th, there was questioning as to whether or not he could become bonded for the construction phase of that. On 7/2, we questioned him again, and on 9/15, which was September 15th, it was finally determined that Gaffin Construction was not being, was unbondable for the construction phase of this project. As such, in October 16th, the council opted to contract with Scott Tucker in an effort to get him to work with Brian Gaffin on the existing drawing as the architect going forward. On November 8th, the city was informed that there has been no agreement developed between Brian Gaffin and Scott Tucker. So that brings us up to current as to where we are. I would like to mention that the delays in this project have been numerous. We're talking an award of contract, which we thought we were going to be seeing some construction, actually completion, by February of this year, and as yet, we haven't even pulled the trigger on this project. And I feel it's very important that we move forward from where we are. If you'll remember, council members, there was a design by Mr. Gaffin, in which the city is going to spend $140,000 for the design plan, and this design plan that we had didn't have a box office, didn't have a full-service elevator, it had a concrete stage, didn't have any kind of scene shop or costume shop in the back area details. It did provide us with a large shell of a building, a nice grand staircase in the lobby, two large restrooms modified into the lobby, and a couple of backstage bathrooms. But with that 150K or 140K architecture fee, we've also seen several months of delay, and we basically didn't hear that there was an issue with ADA requirements that did require a lift to be put into the system, and because of the design, the only lift that could be put in was a service lift, which would only reach a height of 14 feet. With that in mind, the city opted to demolish the balcony, as it would result in having to have the balcony replaced anyway, and so we moved forward to speed up the process by demolition of the balcony, and now that's coming back to haunt us, as we could have saved some money by not demolishing that if we followed through with a new scope of design. And I got to visiting with Melvin Fane, because he had presented a drawing back in July 25th, back when we were discussing incorporating St. Helens with the Opera House. And we had a great support out there from the community on this, and I'd like us to revisit that. I took the time over the Thanksgiving holidays to get out my CAD program and start whittling up and putting together a concept drawing, which incorporates St. Helens, with a thought pattern that at least we can go forward with some sort of a proposal that would be contingent upon a redesign based upon, say, a 60-day acquisition of St. Helens Building by the city of Granberry. And I'm hoping I can encourage the community to show their support, to move forward with the project again. The original thought that I had when I first put this plan together and started drawing it at 2:00 in the morning was to try to construct a design that would come in at the 2.325 figure, and I don't know if I've done that or not. I haven't, we haven't submitted this particular drawing plan to Scott Tucker for formalization to where it can be fed out to his architect, because it will be an issue where Scott Tucker will go forward with his own design team, his own engineering team, his own architecture. So all of that being said, I would, I've presented all of the council members with pictures. It's a concept, and I believe we've got the concept here for review. I've heard back from several of the council members regarding why this was done and why this was accomplished, but I put together a ground floor plan. Can we go forward as well? I also put together some sort of a grid for lighting, stage rigging, catwalk, spot booth, an elevation cutaway view. If you look at the top of the drawing, it shows a side view, so I was trying to address all of the issues that we need to consider, which are line of sight, depth. This plan does incorporate a basement into the scope to where we would actually have some under the stage accessibility, a wooden stage floor, only one foot above the grade. If you look at the elevation after the third row, it's actually at ground level, and it would allow us to keep handicapped seating to where handicapped accessibility is at ground level all the way into the facility, and ground level would also be a crossover aisle for handicapped seating in the audience, as well as, can we go on to the next drawing, please? Well, a balcony with a couple of stairs coming off of it, entering into the lobby for a grand entryway. No box office located inside of the lobby. If you'll go back a couple of pages for me, please. Box office and concessions would be located inside of the St. Helens Building. We would have the capability, if we got the St. Helens Building, if you'll notice, there's a stage right wing, which allows the incorporation of a backstage area for the stage crew to manipulate property as well as scenery into during the show. If you'll notice, back in the alleyway behind St. Helens, by the fact that the city would own that, we could actually enclose the alleyway with restroom facilities, and if you look at the bottom of the screen on the left-hand side, the thought process brought to my attention by Councilman Parsons was to remove the exterior restrooms off of the parking lot and incorporate them on the east side of that facility to allow some public restrooms that are a little closer to the Nutshell Edery as well as the town square. But that's the concept, guys. It's not for us to pull the trigger on. It's, I received a letter, I sent this out to Melvin Fane, as it was his drawing that I was basing it on, and I got back a response from him that says, "I propose that I be given a breakdown of the monies currently available for the Opera House renovation, with all categories clearly identified, such as the rigging, the sound lighting, curtain, et cetera. I will then know how much money is available for construction and interior design. With this figure, I will, on an hourly paid basis, along with the paid cost estimating consultation of Scott Tucker Construction, be able to design a floor plan and an interior scheme that can be constructed for the dollars available." He goes further to say that, "I estimate this work will be about $10,000 for my work and $5,000 for Scott Tucker estimators. This work should be able to be completed within a two-week timeframe. If timed correctly, it would still give the council to have a special meeting regarding the St. Helens project." And I appreciate Mr. Fane for sending me out that email to outline that we can move forward with this, but I think it needs to be a process where the city has a little bit more input this time, and by presenting a concept drawing and getting everybody to take a look at it, we can say, "Well, what if we cut this? What if we add that? What if we slice it up? How can we save some dollars on this project?" This design that I threw out there, it's a thought in my head as to what I would like to see for a theater. Is it what we need? Probably overboard. Can we get in under the $2.325 amount? I would hope so. I really hope so. But that's for us to pull the trigger with Scott Tucker, which I'm willing to do tonight and sign that agreement at $2.325 million, and get us moving forward with the Scott Tucker Construction Firm. And he has assured us that he has an architect on board, some engineers, and I believe Mr. Tucker is here. Bill, you are here, is that correct? If council has any questions, I think this is a good time to ask any questions of Scott, Bill Scott, or of Melvin Fane, if you want to. I did mention that we have a concept drawing from him. I do want to tell you that he's also stated in his email that bringing forward his budget, as I supplied you with in the packet, is not apropos for what I threw into the mix, which is a concept drawing. So it's not dollars for dollars. At the time he proposed the budget, there was a different thought pattern. There was a stage actually in place at the Opera House, there was actually a balcony in place at the Opera House. So things have changed with this concept that I threw out, but it's for discussion. Ask any council members to talk about it if they want to.
Mayor, I'd like to...
Mr. Allen?
Since I put it on the agenda, I would like to talk about it.
Great.
First of all, I want everybody out there to know that I'm 100%, behind the Opera House. We were talking about this two years ago, I was on the council for about four months, and the mayor brought up a deal about buying one of Scott Young's buildings, if you look and facing the Opera House, it's on the right-hand side. Well, that got turned down. Three months later, he comes up with the St. Helen Building. That got turned down. And I'm telling you, I'm a businessman, and my business is not where I want it to be. And I hear it from many, many merchants on the square, that they want to get this thing going, and they want to go now. My understanding was, on October 18th, that, or 16th, I'm sorry, that we, Mickey made a motion, add everything back into it on Mr. Gaston's drawings, which I thought they were okay, I just now have found out they're not, but I'm going to call Brian Gaston up here, I want to talk to him about it. But he made the motion, I seconded it, and 100% of us voted for it. And I thought we were giving him a contract to build the drawings that we had from Brian Gaffin. I didn't know we were giving him a contract for 232,300,000 and saying, "What can you do for that?" That's not what I understood it, and I sure don't think some of the other council people understood it that way. Don't know. But if you look at it with a St. Helen Building, you're adding a concession stand, a box office, and elevator on that side. Your bathrooms and stuff are still going to be in the new building back behind there, which I don't know, some, I don't know nothing about. which I don't know, I don't know nothing about Opera House, so I'm not trying to tell you I know how to design one, because I sure don't. But some of these rooms are twenty by thirty, great rooms, twenty-five by fourteen. The Star's room is fourteen by fourteen. I mean, those are some pretty good-sized rooms that we can cut down and still get the restrooms back there. I do like the idea of tearing down the other building and moving the mans and women over closer to the Nutshell. But, you know, here's the thing about it. It's only two weeks. And then it'll be another meeting. It'll be another design. I won't like something on there, the mayor won't like something, one of us others might not want to like something, and we're gonna be redrawing this. Even if it was two weeks, we wouldn't be in there until the end of August. And by my calculations, that's the end of summer for visitors coming into Granbury like they do. They'll come in in September, they'll come in October, but they're not gonna come in like they do in the summertime. We whipped this thing around. First meeting that Mr. Nyn Hewlett was here, we voted on this thing. It's been over a year ago. We're still where we were. A lot of people says, "I can't believe y'all gonna spend that kind of money." It's not gonna cost the taxpayers any more money because we're taking it out of the bond money that was sold years ago that we've been paying them. But to me, to put it off another day, I'm against that. One hundred percent. And the contract you're signing tonight is for Mr. Gaffin's drawings. I believe I'm right. If I'm wrong, correct me. But I'm saying, I think we have punished the downtown merchants and citizens of Granbury long enough. Either let's do it, or let's scrap it, one way or the other.
Any...
Thank you.
Thanks. Anybody else want to speak regarding this?
I would.
Mr. Gouge?
I've taken some time to look at the drawings and...
Which drawings, sir?
That Mr. Scott had, that Mr. Scott, or Bill, that Bill...
The Gaffin drawings?
That Bill bid the price on.
Alright, thanks.
And I'm not in favor of more delay. However, there's still gonna be more time that's required for design. There is no insulation in the back building. Zero. So, where's that money gonna come from? It's one of the most expensive types of construction you could possibly option for. Digging out the entire, the entire existing foundation, blowing out the entire back wall is very, very expensive. So, if it takes two more weeks to see a conceptual drawing that in fact might save us money and that would not, that would not delay the project, because I've got to believe if you don't have to blow out the back wall, you're gonna pick up some construction time on that. And so, I would be in favor of a two-week analysis by Mr. Fane, but instead of us trying to design the theater as council members, I'd like to see some people appointed that are in that business. And I want to see a budget of 1.7 million dollars to give to Mr. Fane to show us what he can, what he can build for 1.7 million. This would also give us time to touch base with the donor base and see if they're still onboard in donating funds. I think it's important that we include the community. There's also no funding for the seats. That's not in the 2.325 million dollars.
Yes.
What is? Okay. Well, I have resigned my seat on the Granbury Theater Company, but we would like to propose, or they would like to propose, that we take over the seat project where we could help defer the cost to the city and at the same time, raise funds that would help the theater company with their expenses. So, I think it's a win-win on all sides of this. If we take the two weeks to let Mr. Fane proceed and offer up an alternative to what's on the table. Based on the drawings, the concessions are upstairs, there's no, there's no box office. And again, these are from plans from what was bid by Scott Tucker. So, if we don't even have a box office in the existing plan, no insulation on the new building, we're not done designing. Those things have to be addressed, and we need to build this for a hundred years, not for two years, and have to come back and pour more money into it. So, that's my position on that.
Alright, anybody else want to speak regarding it?
Mayor, I'd like to speak a little bit. You know, I'm listening to all this, and it's going around and around, and I pulled out all my paperwork today and got it home, and I was looking at all of it, and it's like a vicious circle. I mean, I looked at a plan, I looked at a schedule that took us all the way to being into that thing right about now. And it didn't work, and I looked at, I looked at prices, I looked at all that stuff, and nobody's followed through with this. Nobody has done anything but just put it on the paperwork and then go around and find somebody else that we want to talk to or some other way we want to do it. Now, I am all for, because I'm hearing it out there from many, many citizens, when are we gonna start something? And I am all for, and we've talked to Mr. Tucker out there, and he says, "If I said, 'Tomorrow, can you start?'" He said, "Yeah, yeah. Just tell me when. Just get the contract signed and let's do it." So, that's where I'm at with this. We need to just start now. I do not want to delay this thing even another day. For the citizens out there, and for me too, I mean, I've got so much paperwork, I don't know which direction's going right now. There are so many figures out there, and you can take any of them, and they look really good, but when you show them, we got five cooks up here, or six cooks, in the kitchen, and everybody has a different agenda, it seems like. And we're not gonna get it done doing it that way. We've gotta, we gotta pull the trigger, and I think right now we're as close to pulling the trigger as we've been in three years, that I'm hearing. So, I think we need to go out there and get the contract signed and go forward with it, and if you can start tomorrow or next week, I'm all for it. Now, you know, if there's, it already says in the contract that if we find things that we need to alter or deviate from, we'll do that. But let's get started on the Opera House right now, tomorrow.
Mr. Tucker, can I ask you some questions, please, sir? I'm sorry, Mr. Scott. Bill Scott. Sorry about that.
I apologize to you. Bill Scott.
And I see you brought your sidekick. Is this Jeff?
My right arm, Jeff Giles. Bill Scott, 908, Pennsylvania, 476111.
Thank you for coming down here again. We appreciate that.
Pleasure.
My first question has to do with the agreement that was agreed upon during the October 16th meeting. In that agreement, it does not spell out who your architect is. It basically is an agreement with a dollar amount, a cap, so to speak, and as well as, it's got a cost-plus clause in it that says that if the cost comes in at 1.9 million dollars, you're going to request 5% of that cost for the project. Am I correct in that assumption?
Yes, sir.
Alright. So, that's what cost-plus means. Cost plus 5% of whatever the project cost is. Now, in clarification of cost-plus, is that excluding any architecture fees, or is that inclusive of architecture and engineering fees?
It's inclusive.
Okay. So, I just want to know where we're going with this. And your firm has done commercial government buildings before, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
You're fully bondable?
Yes, sir.
So, going forward, we don't have a question as to whether or not you're bondable?
No, sir.
Alright. And so, if we were to take and throw my picture, my concept that you see up on the board to you, and you were to give it to an estimator, and you work in conjunction with, we mentioned Melvin Fane, but it doesn't have to be Melvin Fane, it's an architect of your choosing. And say you come back to us with a dollar amount that's 1.7 as somebody requested, and we say that's the dollar amount we want to shoot for. We can come up with a drawing and a plan that would meet that dollar amount, I'm sure. We might not have everything that's in this drawing, but I would say a good portion of it would be able to be achieved.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, in clarification, Mr. Allen, you had asked whether or not the agreement with Scott Tucker Construction actually included Brian Gaffin's current design. It was based on that number of building, a building of that. That's where the dollar amount of 2.325 came from, based on that design. But that is not to say because they could not reach an agreement, Mr. Gaffin and Mr. Scott, they couldn't reach an agreement. It's now up to Mr. Scott to go forward finding another architect. I took the opportunity, let me just finish. I took the opportunity to introduce Mr. Fane to Mr. Scott right before Thanksgiving in an effort to see if I could get those two to join up and at least feel comfortable with one another. Whether Mr. Fane is his architect or not, that's not for us as a city council to decide.
I have no problem with that.
All I wanted to do was bring forward a concept that had been floated out there by a local architect for a building. And I do want to remind you that Mr. Fane also presented us with a drawing concept using the single footprint building, staying within the existing Opera House. It wasn't exactly what the council wanted as far as the seating arrangement, it was a stadium-style seating. But if you remember, we did get a concept drawing for a single footprint from Mr. Fane as well. This was all during the preliminary where we were outreach-ing and reaching for an architect for the project. So, with that being said, we are at a 2.325 contract, million-dollar contract.
Can I clarify that?
Yeah.
I just want to clarify.
Okay.
And Bill Scott's here. When you did the highest price, get the guaranteed maximum price, we came down to a total of 2,202, okay? And it goes to his comment too. That's what, that's what the summary came to, was 2,202. And then we had things that we were gonna take out, which Parsons has to put back in, so that got us back to 2,202. And I had two items, which was $60,000 for the seats and $67,000 for additional architecture. It turns out, working with our interior designer, we can do those seats a lot cheaper than that, okay? There's a way to do that. So, I'm still happy with the 127. Take the 127,000 plus the 2,202, it comes to 2,329, and in our just rounding, we said 2,325. Now, that's how we got to 2,325. So, everybody understands. So, the contract that he would actually sign, unless he wants to go ahead and include those in your contract for 2,325 and pay that architect fee and those chairs, I'd put that aside because that wasn't in the contract before, okay? But we had to go ahead and approve the full amount that we were gonna have to spend. That's why we brought those items up, so they wouldn't be surprised at the cost of the chairs and the cost of the architecture, okay? So, I just want to explain that. He can, the total contract with the total cost is 2,250,000.
Excluding the fly rail, if, that's excluding the fly rail?
The fly rail system is 250, which is a separate item.
Well, it's not 250 in itself, it, that's...
With the lighting and sound.
Yeah.
Lighting, sound, and fly rail is 250,000.
I've got a question for Mr. Scott, if it's okay, Mayor.
Sure. We've got him up to the pulpit. He's gonna preach to us.
Mr. Scott?
Yes, sir.
On October 16th, whenever you were here, correct?
Yes, sir.
And we talked about it, again, Mickey made the motion, I second it. What do you think he was gonna be billing?
Job, the numbers based on.
The job, the numbers based on.
Which was the Brian Gaffin drawing?
The Brian Gaffin drawing, correct?
GMP7, yes, sir.
Okay. And I believe I had the conversation with you, and if not you, it was with your superintendent that moved down here to do the job, and they said it didn't make any difference who architect was or engineer was, y'all could still build that building. Is that correct?
I don't know what superintendent told you, sir.
The one that worked for you. But is that a true statement or not?
I'm sorry?
Is that a true statement?
We, that doesn't matter who the architect is?
In other words, if Mr. Gaffin and you couldn't get together, y'all could hire your own architect and still do his plans.
That's the terms of the contract, yes.
Okay. So, I'm real confused of what you said, Mayor, is we gave him a contract for 2.3, but it wasn't for Brian Gaffin's drawing.
It was based on Brian Gaffin's drawings, that's what I said. And my point being, in Brian Gaffin's drawings, there's so many things that are missing that are part of a theater, especially on the backstage portion of it. What the audience sees would probably look very opulent, but when it comes to running a theater and operating a theater, and I've got to remind you, I've been in the theater business, I've been a stagehand since the 1970s. So, I've been around a few theaters. I used to work at the Opera House. I used to work at Tarrant County Convention Center in the theater, in the arena, at the Casa Manana. I've been involved in theater for many years, but that's, that just is something I know about because I'm still a member of the stagehand union. But it's something that I know about, the backstage. Out in the front of the house, the people don't know whether there's scenery moving or if the actors getting dressed and changing clothes back behind a curtain. They don't know that.
Mayor, you've been to several meetings that I've been in with you, that Mr. Gaffin was there, Mr. Combs was there, Wayne was there. Why didn't you bring this up four months ago?
Are you kidding me?
No, I'm serious.
Are you serious? You're questioning why?
I'm serious, I'm being fair, folks.
You're telling me I didn't bring up those issues?
You brought up the pit, the pit. You did bring it up, and you brought up a deal, you wanted sound system put in the walls.
Oh, yes.
Speakers wouldn't be seen.
Keep adding them up. Keep going, Mr. Allen.
I'm not arguing with you, I'm just telling you, can we get Brian Gaffin up here?
I'd like to ask the question.
I'd like to finish with Mr. Scott first.
My worst concern, or just say question, is the back wall. Because here you have a rock wall, and I've talked to another engineer, he says they do it, they do it every day. What, do you, when you bid this, you, are you putting fudge factor in there? Because you never, I mean, really, how do you, what's gonna happen to this wall? Have you had structural engineers look at it and tell you how you can take it down?
We've had a couple of shoring engineers review the job. We've got proposals for how to perform a shoring system that would hold the wall up and hold the back wall and take it down.
Okay. But this is an extra cost. If we stay in that building, we have that cost. If we use an adjacent building, we don't have that great a cost. What's the cost of tearing that back wall down? You have just ballparked.
It'd be hard to say by itself, and it's not just the cost of taking the back wall down, it's what has to go back. Taking the, you're taking the back wall down because you're pushing the stage out of the existing footprint.
Okay, yeah, I get it.
So, then you need your 36-foot clear height to have your stage reading in there. So, if you didn't blow out the back wall, that means you're leaving the stage in the existing footprint, so whatever you're adding backstage, doesn't have to be 36-foot tall, you can just cut openings, eight-foot, 10-foot, 12-foot in that back wall to have access from the stage to backstage.
Okay. So, it would cost less?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I would like to point out, though, that in this concept, there's a pit as well as some understage that's going to require basically a basement to be put in, and I think we are going to see some cost balancing act between tearing down a back wall as to digging a basement. Is that correct, Jeff?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. So, where you save somewhere, you may not be saving it on the other side either. It could be a very tightly balanced budget, but I still feel as though it can come in at the 2.3, and that's why I would like to see us go forward with signing the contract at that amount, and if it comes in under that amount, we let him present us back with something. And that's why I wanted to call you up here, Mr. Scott, is if we were to give you these drawings and say, "Let's pull the trigger on an agreement tonight," based on a concept, if we were to give you the dollar amount for that concept, are you able to go forward and bring us back a drawing?
Yes, sir.
And then with that, what the scope of the project would entail?
Yes, sir.
All right. And that's where I'd like to see us moving forward, council members, is moving forward to basically not delay the signing of the agreement as we're hearing discussed, but move forward with the signing of the contract with the Scott Tucker Construction Group to go ahead and let me penate my name to it as we already previously agreed. Either that or let's make a motion to delay it and delay it until we can hear back with a concept drawing. It's going to cost some money, as we heard from Mr. Fain in his email, that it would cost us some dollars for him and the engineering or the estimator, which is Jeff, to come forward with a proposal in a couple of weeks.
You have the whole detailed drawing done in two weeks, Mr. Scott. You wouldn't?
No.
Okay, when would you be willing to, when could you, the quickest you could start on that bill? Not start on it now, but after you get all the pricing and stuff, we know what we got. I'm like Gary Couch here, I don't like signing blank checks. And that's what we talked about earlier, Gary. And, you know, the 1.7 looks better to me now, and even 1.2 we got looks greater. But how long would it be before you could get us a complete price? If we give you a blank check for 2.3, it's going to be close to 2.3. If we give you 1.7, it's going to be 1.7, here.
In the development of a project, it's usually customary for an owner to provide a budget with the job that's to be designed and built. If it's 1.7, it'll reach $700,000, whatever, or 17 million. Take a budget.
And how long would it be if we said 1.7, like Mr. Couch said?
If you rub something out along with what Mr. Fain proposed, toss it out, and ready to get to a floor plan that we think meets the budget. Obviously have to get an approved floor plan before you develop the rest of the drawings.
How long would it take to get the complete drawing?
I'm not an architect, I would think...
The problem I have with that is the fact that we don't know what footprint we're going to have to tell him to do with. If you say, go out and start this building, what if they, what if they want to build an extra door and they're not going to sell it to us?
Absolutely, absolutely.
I mean, you're putting the cart before the horse.
I agree with you.
It needs to be contingent upon the St. Helens building.
You said at the meeting at Grapevine that you and I think Gary was going to talk to the donors. What did y'all find out?
Well, I haven't spoke with all the donors. It's wasn't my place to do that. I did put a bug in people's ear and I've heard positive from the community. I haven't got anybody actually coming to me and saying, hey, I'm willing to give you money. That's not what I went out there asking. I went out there asking if they were still on board with the possibility of bringing St. Helens back into the mix.
I just have one more question, Mr. Scott. The mayor was pointing out the things that was wrong in Mr. Gaffin's drawing. Y'all didn't catch that whenever y'all were bidding it?
Yeah, I'd like to say that it's not their place. If that's what we put out there and say, this is the drawing, please give us a guesstimate. It's not the construction firm's question to come out there.
To remodel my business and I got drawings and they seemed they were wrong or knew what they were doing, I'd hope they'd tell me about it.
But you heard, he said he can build whatever that drawing has on it. He can build it. It's going to cost you 2.325 to get that. You're going to have a concrete stage.
Okay, I'll wait and talk to Mr. Gaffin.
You're not going to have box office. We listed all those things.
Can I have a moment?
Yes, sir, Mr. Parson.
All right. In the backstage area, the mayor commented that there might not be enough room for backstage area. Is there quite a bit of unused space in the plannings that you have? Is there room in that existing drawing, the Gaffin drawing, for the backstage or do you need more room?
There is plenty of space. It's two stories high as well. It just doesn't have any walls.
All right.
I'm sorry, it has a few walls.
If you were to think about Mr. Couch's comment about the Haydite block building in the back, what if we were to make a decision to move to a metal with a rock veneer with an insulated wall? Would that be less expensive than the Haydite?
We'd just have to cost them out. We'd have to get, do a preliminary design and cost the difference.
Okay. Then if you look at, I assume it'd be a little while before you start on the interior of this thing, right? You're going to, replacing some trusses in the original building or beefing up anything in there to handle the air conditioning and the new roof? We're doing some beefing up in that and then we've got to add the back and build a foundation, all of that for that, right? So during that period of time, we could probably talk about maybe reducing the seating by a row or so to such that we could put the box office and concession stand downstairs. Is that a possibility? Okay, so you could move those so that they weren't and we could also put design it such that maybe there was a little bit less seating. What is current seating under the Gaffin plan? Three something?
It was around $299, if I recall.
$299, okay. So to go to $275 or something like that and move the concession stand, concession down and put a decent lift in there. And I think also in this original estimate, there is no finish out in the additional space in the back. Is that correct? Maybe one bathroom? It's not finished out for actors or for scene prep or anything like that?
There's one big room and two toilet rooms.
Okay, two toilet rooms, two small rooms, yes. So it's just big open space, okay. Let's talk about, in your bid, I believe there were allowances for maybe some testing and then allowances for carpet and things like that. Any overages on the allowances are the city's responsibility? And in the allowances, any underages goes to the credit of the city. Would that be true?
Yes, sir.
That, the 30-70 rule wouldn't apply to those allowances, is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. What about scope changes? If scope changes reduce the price, are they subject to the 30-70 rule or do they, they would be on their own?
The savings clause typically in an AIA or, you know, any contract is not really executed till, you know, two months, three months after the job, 100% complete.
Okay.
An allowance at all is properly tracked, shown in open book fashion.
Right.
Owner sees books and we spent $10 and we had $100 in allowance. We spent 10 that night, goes back into, call it contingency, call it budget, call it whatever it is. The savings aren't accrued till the job's open.
Okay.
In a GMP contract, you're guaranteeing the maximum price is the bottom line, not any of the light out.
Okay, so there's not a framing and a carpet and that kind of thing? It's on the overall, on the overall total basis?
Yes, sir.
And adjusted for the allowances?
To answer your question on the change order, if y'all deduct, if y'all up half that bill as a change order, that changes the GMP, the GMP goes down.
Okay.
So that doesn't go into the savings clause.
All right. And in the original discussion, what, we're on 240 days? How many days, how many days were we?
210.
Huh?
It was 210.
210, okay, thanks.
And just so you know, that was part of the agreement, 210 clause was in there. The clock doesn't start ticking until a building permit is issued or a go order has been issued by the city. In this case, it would be a building permit. The design phase is still during the design phase. We could, I spoke with our council to the left of me and I asked him, I said, what's to preclude us from going ahead and signing the agreement at 2.325 and just moving forward with some sort of a budget number that he knows he can go forward and try to design something and get back with us? Whether we go forward with a chopped up version of what we have before us with the Gaffin drawing so we get some of the amenities that we talk about for backstage? It's very possible we could see some savings either way, as Mr. Parson is pointing out. There are ways to redesign and rework what we have before us. The question is, are we using Mr. Gaffin's drawing? And do we have his permission to move forward with butchering up and modifying his drawing without him being on board as the architect? That's the issue that I think we're going to have to address. And for that reason, it's time to bring Mr. Gaffin up. You don't have an answer for that? You're not saying whether we have, if we, the question I have for you is, if you're paid for the architecture fee as you've presented it, you've submitted an invoice, my question for you is, do we have the rights to work with your drawing and make modifications? I think that's on everybody's mind.
Brian Gaffin, 1809 Catalina Drive. If I'm going to come up here, I'm going to come up here and dispel a bunch of rumors. Gary, you said there's no insulation in the back wall?
I'm talking about inside the building. I know there is insulation between the block.
And what do you need insulation on the inside of the building for?
Well, what kind of temperatures are we going to be dealing with, Brian, with the insulation that is in the plan right now?
I'm sorry, Gary, I mean, you're talking about insulation on the inside of the building. We're trying to, we have a conditioned structure. So you're talking about interior wall partitions or you're talking about the exterior wall partitions?
Interior.
There is insulation in all of the exterior walls, as indicated with the exception of the exterior walls of the existing structure.
How much insulation, Brian?
One inch, region.
Okay.
You mentioned that you wanted a building that would last for 100 years. The design that you have will last for 100 years. There were decisions made through the design process that eliminated the steel, the stick and brick type of construction, Mickey, that you were referring to. That was analyzed, that was discussed. You can't support a fly rail system with that type of a structure. So at some point, you have a hybrid structure. You would have that along with some CMU possibly on some walls to actually bracket and support the fly rail.
Mr. Gaffin, can you answer the question that I asked of you, please, sir?
No, Ricky, you're not going to be up here.
Mr. Gaffin, I invited you to answer a question and the question is...
I'm going to dispel the rumors and innuendos that have been going around, Ricky. I've got...
All I need from you is whether the city owns the property that we pay for, which is the drawing. Does the city own it and can we move forward with a butcher of that drawing in some manner? Whether we cut down the back wall or we stay within the existing footprint? Are we able to use any portion of your drawing?
I think that's for discussion between Stuart and I sometime this next week. I don't think that's for discussion in the council meeting. I think we need to look at the...
Not only attend, Mayor.
I think we need to look at the burbage associated with the Opera House contract, the AIA.
We've already agreed to a contract with which you found yourself not bondable.
No, the contract that you signed with me was a consultant agreement for...
No, it was a design-build agreement, which is what you were awarded as an architect. You came forward to our council, misled us that you were a design-build firm and you were bondable. You knew that a government contract required bonding on the construction side of it and we were fed line after line, halting us from moving forward with the project. You came up here just now to address these issues that we've been putting out there. Now I'm putting them back on your shoulders, sir. Address that issue.
Rick, I've got minutes from a meeting that I had with the design team, which was Wayne McCaffin, Terry Cohn, Andrew Barris and myself. And I had meetings from March, early March, where the comment was made that the mayor wants to postpone this until November. He wants to postpone this project till November. And I was bumfuzzled by that particular comment. And I wrote it in my notes so that I could actually try to figure out why it was that you wanted to delay it till November. And now I kind of had an inkling of why maybe you're doing this.
Because we were pulling the trigger on the wrong plan.
No.
Rick, you know, the contract that you signed with me is a contract, it's an AIA agreement. It is a consultant agreement for architectural services and you can ask your legal counsel if that's what it is. That's what it is. There was no misrepresentation through that process. To say that the structure has no insulation and it is inappropriate and incorrect statement. If it says that we're digging up the existing foundation, I'm not sure where in my plans it calls for us to dig up the existing concrete foundation that is part of the existing structure.
I understand that.
The knocking out of the back wall, that was bid by a couple of different firms through my process. One of those bids was $15,000, one of those bids was $50,000. So that's the dollars you're talking about blowing out a wall. The Geotech report reports that there's stone, solid limestone, five foot underneath the surface of the dirt that's out there to a point where they're not able to penetrate it for any testing. They couldn't continue their borings past five foot. So to propose a basement begins to pose some interesting scenarios there.
I was giving a different scenario of nine feet is where the bore came once they started the drainage study.
The Geotech report was the only information that was available to me to make that determination. No box office, the determination was made by Andrew Barris to bring in a piece of furniture to act as a box office slash concession stand. There was a concession stand, a multipurpose space downstairs that was going to accommodate the concession stand in the ticket booth, basically a receiving counter downstairs as well as upstairs. So those are some of the issues that, you know, I wanted to dispel. I don't want to get into every issue that we have going forward. The design plans that we have, where we hired professional structural engineers, Renata Woods, where we hired professional engineers to do the mechanical, electrical and plumbing, Wells-Doe engineers out of Fort Worth. Those engineers, along with my architectural plans, we have designed a very nice structure. It's one that Granberry could be very proud of for a long time. If you want to change directions and assume that you're going to purchase the St. Helens building and that you can do a basement and that you have room for a fly rail system and that the existing structure will actually accommodate a fly rail system, then, you know, I wish you well through that design process. To point out the flaws associated with that particular design, I think that eventually the architect that y'all decide to go with or that you allow the general contractor to go with will actually be determined pretty rapidly.
The issue that I still have is, say we need to save some money. Say we don't want to come in at 2.3 and we want to go back and relook at some of your drawing and revise your drawing. You're the architect of record. It seems to me like you would want to be on board the project to see that those changes are made.
Absolutely, Ricky.
You're the licensed architect of that drawing.
I am, and Renata Woods wants to remain part of that and Wells-Doe wants to remain part of that. They are part of the team that produced a set of the construction documents. If those sets of construction documents get modified, absolutely, we want to be part of that team going forward. And Bill Scott and I never had a discussion where I said, no, I don't want to become part of that team. We were discussing the AIA family documents and those AIA family documents, the consultant agreement that you signed with me, the design-build agreement that the city's going to sign with Scott Tucker Construction. And there is an AIA derivative document that is part of that family document that Bill Scott and I negotiated for several meetings. We negotiated the terms of that particular agreement. A week and a half later, I got an email that said change and they modified it to an onerous Scott Tucker consultant agreement and one that I couldn't live with. I was asked to modify that, basically put in some modifications that said that we were going to do construction administration. I said, basically, the only thing that I liked was the salutation portion of that document. And that was correct. Everything else was way too onerous. I think Bill Scott and I have a great arrangement. We have a great camaraderie. I think he's a great guy. I think they're a great company. I think they need to be doing the construction. But do we want to be part of that team? We absolutely do. But are we going to sign an onerous agreement that actually puts us in a position of being the general contractor on the project without getting compensated for that? We're not going to do that. And neither is Renata.
You're not bondable for that aspect. That's what we found out in September.
There...
That's why we find ourselves where we are, Mr. Gaffin, is we were misled when we chose you for the design build, which was not two parts until you made it two parts. You created in such a manner, you brought forward to council a document that said, this is part one. We'll figure out part two once I figure out whether I'm bondable or not.
Mayor, you have a consultant and a council, correct? And you signed the document, right?
I signed that document because we were led to believe you were bondable.
No, you signed the document, an AIA document, that your legal counsel had looked... No, you signed the document, an AIA document, that your legal counsel had looked at and that the consultant on the Opera House team had also reviewed and looked at as well. Is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Gaffin, we signed it. We agreed, and we have a commitment to you for $140,000. I'm glad you're happy with that. I feel like I've been bent over myself, and that's a personal jab. I don't appreciate it because we were misled, and I had all confidence in you going forward at the very get-go that this was going to be a project that a local contractor was gonna bring to fruition under his guise, under his watch. And I'm very disappointed that we are finding ourselves one year out and we're where we are right now. And personally, I don't have anything else to say. I know Councilman Allen does.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm embarrassed on a lot of things here, Brian.
I agree.
It's not all in your bag either.
I agree.
We can't go out, even if we change our mind tonight, go for 1.7. If we got everybody telling them what to put in, change this, change that, I don't care who the engineer architect is, it adds prices. You ever built your own home? You put one chandelier in, it's $300. Put a different one in, it's $1,300 or $3,000. All that adds up. I was just so shocked, Brian, that your drawings were so screwed up. I didn't know that, and I looked at it myself, that all this stuff is wrong.
I'm amazed as well. You know, we've had two general contractors send them out for competitive bids, both of which were contacted and communicated with prior to, way before the mayor says that I couldn't fulfill the bonding portion. So we've had two general contractors send these out to multiple subcontractors, material suppliers, and to the best of my knowledge, I haven't received any question concerning the construction aspect of the project. And y'all have a consultant as well on board that, you know, ensured that you had the documents in place to actually send them out for competitive bids.
The first drawing that we looked at, Brian, I disagreed. I agreed with the mayor on that, that the detail wasn't there, and you came back and done it for us.
Right.
Mayor, I got a motion. When you get ready.
I'd like to see them, Brian.
Anybody else want to speak to Brian, Mr. Couch?
Yep, Brian. The insulation part of that, I misspoke. I apologize. I did know there was one inch. I just felt that that's insufficient for that building.
Anybody else? Thank you, Mr. Gaffin. And thanks for coming up to answer questions and defend yourself, sir. Mr. Scott, we're back at you, sir. Appreciate your patience. If I pin my name to that contract as was guided by the previous council on October 16th, I pin my name, is there anything that precludes us from making changes to that contract?
No.
We're not locked in at that number of 2.325 at any given stage. We could come back and you could bring forward some changes and address it irregardless of which design was presented.
You can change order to a dollar tomorrow.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. All right, Councilmember, Mr. Allen, you have a motion.
Yes, Sir Mayor, I want to make a motion that we use Brian Gaffin's drawings, award the contract to Tucker Group for $2,325,000. And if there's any changes on the drawing, it'll be brought back before the council for approval.
Take it. We have a motion by Mr. Allen, seconded by Mr. Hewlett, to award the contract to Scott Tucker Construction to utilize the Brian Gaffin drawing as presented. Any discussion?
And also, Mayor, if there's any changes, like if we wanted to change...
Oh, I'm sorry. And should there be any changes, that any changes would be brought back to council?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any discussion regarding this? Mr. Parsons? I saw you move up to the mic.
I think I'm generally in favor of that. I've got some problems with the council approval on that. One is there gonna be a scope limit on that? Are we gonna look at every $5 change? Are we gonna look at changes over $50,000? Or what are we gonna look at? And I'm wondering if maybe we shouldn't have something that allows the design team to work on through some of the issues that we've talked about tonight, which would be finish out in the back and maybe improving the approach up front. I don't know. And the theater man may not want that. I don't know. He may be happy with the concession upstairs. I know at Bass Hall, it's in the basement, right? But I'm wondering if we want to improve every $5 change or we want to do $50,000, you know, something like that?
Yeah, that's fine. I have a problem with that.
And try to work through some of these things. I don't know if we can get the cost down on it or not. Having said that, I was in favor of the St. Helens building when we first looked at it and was disappointed that that didn't come through. For it to happen in a short enough period of time for us to work with what we've done so far and to get St. Helens bought into this, to me, is somewhat problematic in terms of timing. If we're on 210 days, how many months is that? In the June, if we started tomorrow? First of January?
No.
First of December.
Wish us luck.
I mean, Mickey, I don't mind if you want to look at $25,000 or $50,000 on that. I mean, I'm like you, I don't think you should bring it up here for every nickel.
And are ups or downs or just ups?
Both ways.
Both ways?
You want to say that it's $25,000 or $50,000?
Mayor, if I might, I want to...
Let me let them finish up their little discussion amongst themselves as to what this dollar amount is that we're talking about amending.
$25,000, Mayor.
That would require a second from you, Mr. Hewlett.
Take it.
So you're in approval of moving forward with Scott Tucker Construction Company utilizing the Brian Gaffin drawing, but any changes that might be dollar savings will be brought back to council, should they be in the neighborhood of $25,000?
Yeah, hopefully.
But either way. So that's our motion on the floor. Any other discussion regarding this?
The only discussion I have, Mayor, is that I would hope that we can go forward with this now with the council and that we could possibly just do what we're supposed to do, and that's spend the money and let them know what we want and let the people run the bulldozers, let the people set the steel, and not us be the experts in that, because I think that's where we've gotten trouble. We all have an opinion of how something should be done, but that's what we're hiring these people to do, and we're gonna spend the money and give them the timeframe, and we need to concentrate on that, I want to say.
Anybody else want to talk on this?
Yes, I would.
Mr. Couch?
I think 2.3 million is too expensive. You're gonna have to help me with this, Mayor. Can I amend this?
You can.
Do it.
You can request that your councilman to your right, who made the first motion, amend his motion. You can ask him to. Whether he goes along with it or not, that's for him and his second, which is Mr. Hewlett to decide.
Okay. Well, I would like to ask Mr. Parsons to also...
It's Mr. Allen is who made the motion, sir.
For Mr. Allen to amend his motion that would still provide St. Helens option to be considered with the presentation in two weeks with a budget of $1.7 million.
So I think what he's asking you is to open it up for an optional, what gives some sort of a contingent of St. Helens, and Mr. Allen is saying no. Mr. Allen wants to stick with his motion, which is we have a motion to move forward with a contract with Scott Tucker Construction to utilize the existing Brian Gaffin drawings, and should there be any changes in the amount of $25,000, either up or down, that they shall be brought back before the council for consideration? Do I have that right, Mr. Allen?
That's correct.
All right. Any other questions regarding this? Mr. Perkel?
I'd like to say, though, that when we voted for the St. Helens originally, two of us voted for it. I'll go along with this, that I personally don't feel this way. That's my personal view.
Well, we're not at the vote yet, sir. You can state your vote in an aye, aye or a nay. So we're not at the vote, we're at discussion. And regarding concession, conversation and discussion regarding this, I still like to point out that to close the door on St. Helens with the possibility that we can move forward with a combination of this is still saying that we want a smaller footprint for the Opera House. We know that it's gonna be smaller. Our design is gonna take us smaller. And if we work with Brian on modifying his plan, is it gonna cost us more money or does it cost us less money? Based on the AIA agreement, he gets 6.7 as to what the project cost is. And as we just heard from Mr. Scott, that should that project cost drop to 1.7 using Mr. Gaffin's modified plans, because we now have a plan from Mr. Gaffin that we might need to be taking a second look at. As the owner of the building, the owner should have some say in what they want. It shouldn't be driven by an architect that's just given a dollar amount. We already heard that if you give them a dollar amount, that's what they're gonna build it for. But is it what we really want? And as we move forward with this, I'd like to see that we open our eyes and understand that what we're looking for when this is all said and done is a functional theater. And that's something that's gonna serve our community, as we heard, for another 50 to 100 years. So with that being said, we have a motion on the floor to approve Scott Tucker Construction to utilize the Brian Gaffin drawing as the architect of record. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Nay.
I need a show of hands, please. All in favor, please raise your hand. We have three, and those opposed, raise your hand. We have two. That motion passes. And that motion was to agree with Scott Tucker to use the Brian Gaffin drawing. Disappointed. That brings us... Any other discussion regarding the Opera House, gentlemen, before I move us off of item number three?
I think we're gonna have a gorgeous Opera House.
I think so, too.
And we need to get it finished. If this process hadn't happened, we'd probably still been trying to build that sucker for a million two. Now we've got $2,303,000, we're gonna build a really nice place. So thank you very much for that.
We're down to item number four. Item number four, discuss and consider a commercial lease and show producers' agreement with Granberry Theater Company Incorporated for the production of shows in the Granberry Opera House and the lease of that Opera House and the dormitory facilities. We looked at executing this contract back in November 1 of 2011 to assist in the design of improvements to the Granberry Opera House. Part of that agreement with Mr. Barris was to create a 501(c)(3), which he has done. Mr. Barris has chartered the Granberry Theater Company. As a result of that request, he's now a nonprofit corporation, and the city has entered into a commercial lease and show producers' agreement with Granberry Theater Company. It was originally considered at a March 20, 2012 city council meeting. During that meeting, city attorney, city manager were asked to bring forth a much more comprehensive document. It was tabled until May 15. During that May 15 meeting, the council again considered and deliberated on this item. However, no formal action was taken. We seem to run rampant on that. Collaboration with Mr. Barris, the city manager, have created the attached agreement, and in it, you will actually find that there's a profit sharing for beer and wine sales mentioned in this, now that there's been an election to allow beer and wine sales around the square. It's also for a period of four years and six months, but the term begins on June 1 of 2013. With that being said, I think we need to make sure that this agreement is not pinned in ink as a beginning date of June 1, based on the fact that we don't have a building to go into just yet. Otherwise, I think we do have an agreement with Mr. Barris regarding all the rest of it, but there are several areas. Section 4 talks about rent and how the rent is from a specific date, June 2013 to December 2014. These areas need to be adjusted and amended as the date becomes more realistic as to win that timeframe of getting inside of the Opera House. In section 7, there's a section that has been underlined in your packet, says, "Accept that the lessor reserves the right to sell alcoholic beverages pursuant to a valid license from the TABC at the lease premises." And it also states that at the bottom, there's been an added line that any profit revenue derived from the sale of alcoholic beverage under this section shall be shared by the lessor and the lessee at a ratio of 50/50. I'd like to suggest that the city's not in the market of taking money away from a production company that's gonna need every dime they need once they get inside of the Opera House. I would like to see that that last sentence be stricken from this. I'm sorry? Okay, well, okay, I see what you're saying. The lessor was just pointed out is the one that's carrying the permit to sell the alcohol with the TABC. So with that being in mind, perhaps a ratio of 70/30, where we're talking in the city... Because once again, I don't think we should be making all that revenue off of the back of somebody who's struggling to stay alive within a venue, and we want to encourage them to survive. There's another section in, under section 12. If you look at part B of that, you'll see that it's underscored, that it says that lessor reserves the right during the term of this agreement, lessor, as has just been pointed out, is the city of Granberry, reserves the right to produce, host or otherwise utilize the lease premises for a location for events or conferences, but only after first notifying lessee, that would be the Granberry Theater Company in this case, of the lessor's intent to utilize those lease premises within 14 days before the scheduled date of the event or conference. And so that language was added to allow the city the option of utilizing the facility. I don't know if 14 days is adequate time to notify to find out whether or not the building is available. I'm looking through the rest of it, and I don't see any other changes. Were there any other changes? All right. So with that in mind, and keeping in mind that the dates may be flexible, entertain a motion to accept the agreement as presented with any modifications for dates.
I would suggest that we discuss this one before we make a motion, so we can go through the litany of amendments or adjustments that might need to be made.
Sure.
So that we can discuss...
If that's the way we want to do it, that's fine.
All right.
We can put it up for discussion first before we motion. Yes, sir.
Because there are... All right. On the date of occupancy and that kind of thing, I would like to see us say that the tenant can occupy the property upon issuance of the certificate of occupancy and that the lease payment begin one month after, on the first day of the following month.
Well, that makes quite a bit more sense. Thank you for that realty info.
We're looking right now at June, end of June, so I'm assuming the theater company's gonna need a month to get their first show going, so give them a month to get in and get their production going, and then they open the first show, then you go from there with that. In the section 7, where we talk about the alcohol, I am an accountant, so I'm not sure I understand what profit revenue is in that sense, but is the 50/50 split, the deal called for the theater company to provide the employees to take care of that?
Yes, yes, that's...
In one sense, that's a problem, because I'm not sure TABC is gonna let you do that without the proper training for those employees, right?
No, they have to be trained.
They'll have to be trained. But then, so will we let the theater company be reimbursed for... But then, so will we let the theater company be reimbursed for their employ while they're there serving liquor? And so there'd be a net revenue process rather than a profit sense, a revenue sense. Follow what I'm saying?
In words, excluding the people who are serving.
I would say, I would say the theater company would get reimbursed for their people serving, being bartenders.
Right. I think that'd be a better approach, yeah.
Well, they don't want to be bartenders then.
Well, I don't know what else you're going to call them.
I mean, they could be serving coffee.
That I don't know.
No, not the alcohol people. I was under the impression that those were going to be.
They'd have a separate booth.
Yeah, separate booth. And then we talked about serving that upstairs, and then only in the concession stands. So those concession stands would have to be, there would have to be a person there to serve it whenever, like at break and before. But during the performance, that person would go upstairs and serve top of all upstairs.
Okay. So, to clean up the language a little bit about that, about reimbursement of their employ or how that works to come up with this, and I agree with the mayor, I'm more on the 70/30.
It would be easier to compute by just looking at the cost of alcohol subtracted from the revenue, and then him submit a request for reimbursement based on the cost of the employee.
Right. Either that or make your ratio based on bar cost 20%, and so you've got an 80% revenue basis, then make your split off to 80%.
Yeah, we'll work, that way you wouldn't have to do any accounting. What kind of come up with a formula for the profit?
In 10(c), it talks about the tenant providing for their own internet and stuff. I would like to propose that the city provide the theater and the dorm with free Wi-Fi, since that's part of our normal everyday cost. And would someone describe for me, or would, I guess the attorney or maybe the manager, in 18(f), it talks about common areas and what we're calling common areas. My experience in real estate makes me think of a little bit different. I don't know whether you're talking about the outside of the dorm or what you're calling common areas. So if you can help me clear that up.
Yeah, my thought when I put that in there was the exterior of the dorm.
Exterior of the dorm and exterior around behind the?
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay, that's fine. That's my comments, thanks.
Any other discussion regarding the agreement? Mr. Couch?
In, in (f), it says that there's not a late fee.
(f) of which part, sir?
I'm sorry. Which, sir? Part 4. Yeah. Okay.
Part 4, section 4, part (f).
I'm in the middle of business. And, am I reading this correctly, Stuart, that they have 30 days before their payment's due without a penalty?
That's correct.
Okay. Now, if I was not wearing, if I was wearing the same hat as a board member, I would really love this clause, but I'm wearing a different hat now. And I think 10 days is plenty for grace.
Okay. I think we originally started out with 10 days, and you heard, so I was, uh, I'm okay with that. I'm okay with that. I think if he, you know, like, said, we're, you know, we're, you know, we're, um, so I'm, I'm personally, I hope the council wants to work with that.
What are you doing here? You get 3 days.
My place.
Can't date Gary yet. No, go with Gary.
Go with your heart.
Well, with that same, you know, with the same thing he said, he'd like to give him 30 days. With minimum, we would.
Well, the council's fine with 30, that's 50 months. I'm okay with that.
I'd rather, I'd rather say it's 50.
Yeah.
I'm okay.
I like 50. I mean, I think that's, I'll make that.
All right, so, so what we have, Mr. Couch, is that all you wanted to address? Mr. Hewlett?
I wanted to address the, to Wayne, how we came about the dollar amount for starting in June, and then January 15, it went up to 3,000, and then January 2016 went up to 3,500. I mean, was there a?
Well, that was about.
Not knowing what the price of the building was going to be and what we're going to have in this thing, was this just something we, is that flexible? I mean, if we, if we end up having more money into this thing, we're trying to recover at least some of our costs, not counting what our, what our rent is, or what our payments are right now in the existing building, is, was that all calculated in?
No, with the added price, it was, we were looking at the time when we first went into the contract negotiation, at a cost of a million two to a million five.
So should we look at this again and say, well?
Yeah, what we also looked at, what the last production company at the end was making, initially he was making more money, but we were, we were making a certain amount. It came down to, at the end, we were making a little less than $20,000 off of the production company when they.
But we're, we're trying to recover our note, existing note, and anything else that we're going to put into this, right?
Well, that, yeah, but those prices did change.
Try to at least break even, right?
Yeah, we haven't renegotiated a higher price. Andrew was concerned getting started, that's why we took it up from 2,500 to 3,500 in total, you know, for each year. I mean, we.
Well, is there, I mean, what I'm asking, I guess, is there a way that we can go ahead and, I mean, I'm okay with the starting value, the starting monies, but I really think we're going to take another look at what we, once we get into it, what we're going to be charging instead of taking and writing the contract for all the way to 2016 on this thing. But we could have a lot more money tied up in this thing that we're not going to recover.
Well, it's true. You know, we can put a clause in that we are able to renegotiate based on profits.
Is there some way we can do that, Stuart, or we can put something like that in?
Yeah, I think that's probably.
I just don't want to lock into a.
Especially since our price has gone up on the Opera House.
Exactly.
You know, we are going to be spending more money.
If that's something that you want Wayne and I to talk to the theater company about, we can certainly do that.
I'd like to see this percent of profit, therefore, they're guaranteed to be able to make the payment as well, but.
But it's going to be hard to do that until they get into this building.
Absolutely.
And find out what they're going to do here.
Yeah. Well, let's just, let's just say that we can renegotiate, we base it on, on it going very well, hopefully it will.
Like I say, I'm okay, I'm okay with the, you know, starting out dollar amount, dollar figure, but I'd like to renegotiate the ones following that.
Okay.
In words, you're saying have it for one year then, and then starting in January 2015?
2014.
Or 2014?
2014. Actually.
Any other discussion regarding this?
Mayor, I've got one question.
Mr. Allen?
Maybe just Stuart. I didn't understand these liquor licenses, are you saying that the city is going to furnish them liquor licenses?
No, not, no, the city already has a liquor license.
Are they going to work under our liquor license?
We would, we would sell the alcohol, yes, under our license.
What's our liability there?
Liability for what?
Somebody gets drunk.
Same, same as it would be if somebody got drunk in a conference center. You do have liability when you sell.
But those are our employees in the conference center, I believe.
That's true.
I tell you, I think for liability of it, why can't they get their own, you do it themselves?
Yeah, they can get their own.
I'd rather see them get their own liquor license, and that way it takes the liability off the taxpayers.
If that's how the council wants to do that, we can certainly work that.
And with that in mind, that would be striking anything that was underlined in that section 7 under concessions. We have a, two underlined sentences there to be, that we might consider striking. And I agree with you, Councilman Allen, that it does create some sort of a liability as to who's doing the sales, also monitoring the sales. If we're trying to track the sales and we're not actually weighing the bottles, we don't know if the sales are up to par.
I mean, we're looking at 30% profit there for the liability, I don't think it's working to us.
Yeah.
If somebody accidentally got drunk, fell off the stage, killed them, we'd be liable for it. And, or got out there and ran over somebody. I don't think we're going to sell that much liquor, it's going to make us a lot of difference, 30%.
Right. And, and as I said before, I think if the theater company has an opportunity to profit off of doing any kind of concessions, I think it should be in their pockets, not in the city's. So, any other discussion regarding the contract? So far, we've heard from the addition under section 4 under rental to put in a clause that says upon execution of the certificate of occupancy and the first month of rent due, on the first day of the month following the CO, and then base all the rest of those monthly intervals based on first month of rent through to the whatever sixth month of rent, but that's for our attorney to draw up based on what we're talking about. Another section was section 4 and part (f). We discussed changing that to 15 days as opposed to 30 days. Section 7, we just talked about striking any underlined comment regarding the sale of alcohol, it should be up to them to do that. We also have a section under utilities that outlines the date, if that could reflect also about the date of occupancy that it begins then, I think that would be wise. Oh, and the free Wi-Fi, I didn't catch where that section was.
Of 10(c).
10(c), thank you. In 10(c), that the city would provide a Wi-Fi free of charge to the both facilities, the dormitory and the Opera House. And let's see. We talked about in section 12(b) that there would be the addition of conferences and 14 days notice to see if we could fit in an event onto the leased property.
Section 4(a).
Section 4(a). I thought that was the one about the CO.
The rentals. We're going to strike out to January 16th, one in the 15th.
And address that at a later date then? Okay, so, striking part (c) out of part (a), that's sub(c) out of part (a) of section 4. So, and that's, that's all we've had before us, that's what we've discussed. All in favor of an agreement and allowing the attorney to get back and authorizing the mayor to sign said amended agreement, please say "aye."
Aye.
Any opposed, say "nay." Motion.
We didn't make a motion, Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I did that again. Entertain a motion at this time to accept the proposed agreement as amended.
So moved.
Well, authorizing the mayor to sign it upon the reworking by the counselor.
Take it.
All right, we have a motion by Councilman Allen, we have a second by Mr. Hewlett. Any other discussion regarding this? All in favor, please say "aye."
Aye.
Any opposed, say "nay." Motion carries. Sorry, I lost my head. At this time, I'd like to declare that the Granbury City Council has convened into open session and that all members are present. The City Council will now go into closed session pursuant to provisions of Texas Government Code in accordance with the authority contained in the following section, section 551.071, consultation with attorney. We'll be back. I'd like to announce that we are reconvened back into open session. Entertain a motion to authorize the city attorney to negotiate a settlement in cause number (c) 2011406, J. Mills versus the City of Granbury.
So moved.
We have a motion by Mr. Parsons, requires a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Couch. Any discussion regarding the motion?
Mayor, I would like to say that I am going to vote against it. This has been going on before you and I either one got on the council or anybody else except Mickey and Laurel. And we went out and spent another $80,000 of taxpayers' money for attorney fee, and now we're not going to, we're going to settle for nothing, is what I'm looking at. And I'm against it. These bids were open before I got on council, and J. Mills got that bid with a pencil written in, not a typewriting like everybody else's bid, with a pencil. And I think it stinks in the word "go."
Any other discussion regarding the motion?
I'd rather spend 85 than an additional 345,000 to proceed with the non-settlement.
If, if they appeal it and we lose, you're right.
Any other discussion?
I have a question.
Well, no further discussion, we're going to move to the question. The question is to authorize the city attorney to negotiate a settlement in cause number (c) 2011406, J. Mills versus the City of Granbury. All in favor, please say "aye."
Aye.
Any opposed, say "nay."
Nay.
Please note that there are two that said "nay," Councilman Hewlett and Mr. Allen. That motion passes, however. We're going to go back to our deliberation agenda at this time, pick up where we left off with item number 5, consider and approve an inter-local agreement between the city and Granbury Independent School District for the purpose of establishing the parameters wherein the GISD will allow the city to tie into GISD's private sewer line in exchange for the city's agreement to maintain that line up to a certain point. What we have before us is, we have a need to extend the sewer system out to the Granbury Regional Airport, our municipal airport, and surrounding areas where there's going to be multiple buildings. It just so happens that GISD has a private sewer line within that area, and an agreement has been reached with Granbury ISD on their part, they are proposing a 30-year agreement with a sewer credit of $30 a month to allow the city to use the existing sewer line. It will save us thousands of dollars in cost to run a parallel sewer line and tie back in to the city. So, it is a cost-saving measure, it does allow them some credit of, as I mentioned, $30 per month. So with that being said, I'll entertain a motion to approve an inter-local agreement between the city and Granbury ISD to interconnect with their existing sewer line in exchange for the city to take over maintenance of the line up to a certain point within the area of the municipal airport for a period of 30 years and a sewer credit of $30 per month during that period.
So moved.
We have a motion by Mr. Hewlett, a second by Mr. Perkel. Any discussion regarding this?
A question about the sewer line, when it was installed, do you think it was built to city standards?
It was, it was an eight-inch line, it was actually built when they did the Ag Barn, which I believe was about three, four years ago.
Tell me a little bit about your understanding of our agreeing to maintain it?
Yes, sir. Basically, what we would do is, we would maintain anything, of course, any backups or anything like that takes place, we would run our machines, would go out there and take care of it, clear any backups or anything like that. If anything gets damaged or so forth like that, we'd also repair that as well.
Including if there's an act of God or anything like that, or what, are there any limitations on what we will, what repairs we're responsible for?
Um, I mean, I guess within reason, we would repair pretty much everything, probably except for an act of God or something like that.
How many facilities do they currently have on that sewer system? Is it their Ag building as well as the high school, as well as that middle school?
Just the Ag Barn itself, actually, comes all the way down over to Crossland.
So we're not talking about a lot of use?
No, sir.
So to build a 2828 or something like that, wasn't it, for, for a month?
Uh, the average bill, I believe, was like 2893 or something like that.
Right.
Yes, sir. For that, and that's basically what they were, they were wanting us to compensate for that.
Okay.
Any more buildings could we add to that, at the airport with that eight-inch line?
Uh, with that eight-inch line, we can build out everything that we're planning to do right now, of course, with everything out there, of course, the air evac and all that. So, most of those buildings pretty much just have like bathrooms and so forth in there, so it will accommodate the entire airport that we're planning right now.
In the entire scope of the project, we're talking some 40 hangars plus, you're still thinking that there shouldn't be any need to upsize that line.
No, sir, not with an eight-inch line.
Any other discussion? All in favor of approval of the inter-local agreement between the city and GISD for the sewer line, please say "aye."
Aye.
Any opposed, say "nay." That motion carries. Takes us down to item number 6. This is also with GISD, consider and approve an inter-local agreement between the City of Granbury and the Granbury Independent School District for the purpose of providing a mechanism for the procurement by the city of two separate locations for future water wells in exchange for the delivery of a metered amount of treated water to GISD. This is going to be a 15-year agreement, it's going to allow them to have some 40... It's going to allow them to have some 40,000 gallons per month of metered treated water credit to their monthly bill. In exchange for that, the city is going to be allowed to drill two separate wells on GISD property. Not necessarily at one location. We're talking two separate locations with this. And as I mentioned, it is for a period of 15 years. They would receive a credit amount equivalent to 40,000 gallons of metered water per month. Mr. Scott, while you're up, I mean, Mr. Cox, while you're up, can you tell us what that equates to in dollars?
Yeah, actually, it'd be 30 years. It's the same as the other one.
30 years?
Yes, it will be 30 for that. Actually, the actual dollar amount, it'd be, I believe it's $266 per month is what that credit would be. So we'll be giving them 40,000. The wells will produce roughly about 6 million.
Regarding that...
Paying a month?
Yes. That's how much water goes to...
What was the dollar amount a month?
It's about roughly about $266 a month, roughly.
After 30 years, what happens?
After 30 years?
We still have the wells.
We still have the wells?
We still have wells, but yeah.
They go back online. No credit.
Thirty years.
Mayor, Mayor.
City Attorney note in 4B, that needs to be changed to 2042.
There's also been a, since the packets went out, Alva and I have worked on the agreement a little bit further and we've actually added language to include that instead of in Section 3, when it just says grant access to, we've clarified in the agreement, the school district are actually filing the deed records exclusive, non-revocable easements to the well site properties as well as a maintenance easement and an ingress/ withdrawal.
That's smart.
And I, and we put it in there that they have to file the deed records so that in 30 years or whenever, if they ever sell the property, we'll always be protected with our well sites for our reasons.
All right.
Make a motion.
All right, entertain a motion at this time.
So moved.
Let me spell it out. Entertain a motion to approve an inter-local agreement between the city and Granbury ISD for the purpose of procurement by the city of two water well locations in exchange for a maximum credit of 40,000 gallons per month metered treated water for a period of 30 years. Mr. Allen, are you still on board?
Yes.
And we have a motion by Mr. Allen, needs a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Parsons. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Oh, and I need to make sure that that's as amended. Are you okay with that, Mr. Allen and Mr. Parsons?
Yes.
Okay, and so we understand that that's amended as we outlined, change of 2042 and the addition of the easement language.
Mr. Cox, my compliments to the chef. Good job.
Thank you. Also, I'd like to thank the school district. They worked hard on this. Thanks, guys.
Yeah, that's a good kind gesture. That's what the community's all about right there. Brings us down to item number 7, consider and adopt a resolution to adopt the Premier Social Security 3121 Alternative Plan under Social Security Section 218 of the Omnibus Budget Reconciliation Act for all part-time, temporary, and seasonal employees. Under Section 218 of Social Security Act, the Omnibus Budget Reconciliation Act, government entities may provide part-time, temporary, and seasonal employees with meaningful defined contribution retirement alternative to Social Security. We currently have matching funds of 6.2 for payroll for eligible employees. Employees will now have a 7.5% pre-tax deduction placed into the Premier Social Security Alternative Plan, which is constructed as a 457 plan. It's 100% vested by the employees and the funds can be rolled over into other 457 plans. I don't mean to be ignorant, but I don't know anything about retirement, so talk to me about 457 plan.
This is Danny Doss. He's with Parks Financial and he can answer all of your questions.
All right. Thank you for coming in, Mr. Dodson.
You're very welcome. Simply 457 is the tax code language where the rules are for retirement plans for governmental entities, much like 401K is private industry. 403B is typically educational plans. 457 are governmental entities. We're all the rules in the Internal Revenue Code, Section 457.
Now, does this mean the guy that's just a part-time worker gets to keep all of his Social Security monies in hand or he can put it into one of these plans? Is that what my understanding is?
Yes.
He has that option?
If the employer adopts a plan, a Social Security Alternative Plan set up by the language that you just mentioned, the Omnibus Budget Reconciliation Act, you can adopt a plan and have the employees' contribution go into the alternative plan instead of go to the Social Security Administration.
He can't keep it?
He can't pocket it.
Correct.
But he can put up to 7.5 and that's pre-tax dollars from what I understand?
Correct. As opposed to the Social Security contribution is 6.2 after tax.
And this is applicable to city council members because we are also considered part-time employees, I take it?
Yes, sir.
All right.
If you're less than full-time employee, you qualify for these plans.
All right. Full-time does not qualify for this. This is only for that seasonal part-time worker that's, say, in the Parks Department or I guess, street maintenance or anywhere in the city.
In fact, I asked him if, I sure like to be on this plan, but they won't let full-time people be on the plan.
But by definition, a part-time, a full-time person cannot be in the plan.
Right.
They don't qualify by definition.
And the other question is, as far as savings per month, we're talking about a financial consideration of saving some $7,000 per year just in the matching Social Security wages. So it is a benefit for the city of saving $7,000 per year. Any other questions for Mr. Dodson?
No.
Or regarding...
The city does not have to match the Social Security, right?
Correct. The legislation only mandates that 7.5%. Minimum of 7.5% must go in the plan and that's specifically paid by the employee.
What does it cost the city to set this up?
Zero.
Is these employees got to sign a deal? They'll leave it with your company for so many years or they can move it tomorrow?
As long as they're employed here, they're not eligible to take the distribution. As soon as they are not employed here, they can take the distribution.
And move it somewhere else?
Yes, they can always roll it over to any other qualified retirement plan that they qualify for, 403B, 401K.
Sure.
It could follow the employee or what's kind of unique about it is they can take a distribution. And the fact that it's under 457, they have no 10% IRS penalty attached here regardless of age. But the trigger to that is when they no longer employ here.
So they're going to be married to your company as long as they're employed here?
As long as we're the...
If we adopt this...
But we could change that. If we didn't want them to do it, we could do it later.
We could come up with a different company, I guess. Right now, we're talking about adopting a plan.
Correct. I would say one thing to you is I would recommend that you get a letter from the State Social Security Administration verifying that you as an entity qualified for this plan. Your ability to do this depends on the 218 agreement with Social Security Administration.
We don't know if we can do it.
I doubt it. Those agreements were signed in the 1950s and it's an entity-by-entity qualification in the state of Texas.
And also, just for clarification, we're not actually stating that we're going with, you're with, again, First Financial?
Yes.
We're not stating in this adopting of a resolution who that company would be. We're just stating in this resolution that we're willing to develop an alternative plan.
Has Christie checked it out to see if we qualify or not?
This is the first time I've heard about it. It's a letter from the state. Danny hasn't shared this with me before, but we will get on that first thing in the morning and find out what we need to get. I don't foresee any problems after our conversation, but I don't foresee any problems if other public entities can do it, we should be able to do it.
Anybody else got questions?
What the, now, is this something that's new or this has just been floating out there and Christie stumbled upon it or how did this come about?
Danny told me about it. He was here talking to us about our other, our city's 457 plan. He had a flyer and he laid it out on the desk and I said, hey, what's that? And we got to talking about it and I said, hey, that sounds good to save us some money and give some of that Social Security back to our employees so they can put it in a plan they can take with them.
So it's been around for several years then?
Yes. Our company manages about 179 and there's a flyer. We've got some detailed information to you, but I think it mentions 179, 779 accounts that we've worked with since the early 80s. This came about in the, was it George Bush that read my lips on other taxes? Passes a lot of the taxes.
We know that guy.
This was one of them. That's one of them, which mandated that all employees must be covered by qualified retirement. Previously, most governmental employers didn't provide anything for part-time employees. And that legislation, in effect, required part-time employees had to go under either Social Security or one of these alternative plans that legislation set up. So that's, but each entity in the state of Texas has an agreement with the State Social Security Administration. And just most employers don't have that accessible anymore. So we typically suggested right to the State Social Security Administration have this validate, verify that this entity is eligible. Before the plan starts, we would not, we would not want to do that without verification. It's flawed.
One more point I'd like to bring up is there's a grandfathered issue on this where existing employees would be grandfathered to stay with Social Security should they decide to do so or they can opt in to the 457 plan.
Yes, sir. That's an employer decision.
Right.
Legislation doesn't speak to that at all. That's an employer decision. And we can administer it however we choose and ask the employer.
There's a lot of positives here, but the only negative is, is that you wouldn't get credit for quarters worked, okay? That's the only negative I could find in it. That basically, some people be working and not get credit for quarters. But then you would have your money in a 457 plan instead of a, so there you go, you don't want to work.
Correct. You would have to certainly have an account that you know that you would get, by the way, a reasonable, the legislation says must be guaranteed the return of your payment and a reasonable rate of return. So our plan does that. It's currently paying 2.8% tax per increase.
Now, we're going to get to that here in just a second. We'll talk about that on this next item. We'll talk about that plan and what the proposal is from your company. But I want to get us back on target as to what we're talking about here, which is adopting a resolution to implement a 3121 Alternative Plan. And as I mentioned, some sort of a grandfather clause. In looking through the resolution, it doesn't have that in the resolution. So I'd like to see if we can amend it by adding some sort of a clause that gives that individual that's currently under employment, that is a part-time, temporary, seasonal worker has the option of opting in or out of this. And let the employee choose whether or not he wants to do it.
You can add that very easily.
Right. So with that being said, at this time, entertain a motion to adopt a resolution to utilize the Premier Social Security 3121 Alternative Plan as outlined in the Omnibus Budget Reconciliation Act in Section 218 with an amendment that reads something to cover grandfathering for part-time workers.
Should we also add, based on approval from the state, that we need to get...
That would be going forward with Part 8 with the next agenda item. That would be a contingency we should add in.
On this item.
It should be on this one.
That's on this item.
Because you can't do either or without approval.
You can't adopt a resolution?
I don't think so.
Wouldn't do you any good if you did.
All right, then we should say whereas, upon...
Approval.
Approval by the state. Any other discussion regarding this? I still need a motion, please, to adopt the resolution as amended.
So moved with that one.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Hewlett, second by Mr. Allen. Any further discussion regarding this? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That motion carries. Now we'll move on to item number 8. Consider and adopt a resolution to transition the current 457 plan from the Hartford Company to Invest Trust. An Invest Trust plan will be administered by the First Financial Administrators who currently manage our Section 125 plan. Hartford is selling their 457 piece of business off to a company called Mass Mutual and we've received or reviewed several options in relation to the sale and it's been determined that Invest Trust is the best choice for our employees. Currently, current plans, which are currently in the Hartford Group, would wind up rolling over into the Invest Trust. And with that, take any kind of information you can give us, Ms. Christie?
That's pretty much the gist of it. We had to either leave it with Mass Mutual or roll it over into somebody else. And we voted back in, I believe it was May, when we voted to allow First Financial to take over our Section 125. We also voted to allow them to take over our 457 administration. This is their recommendation of what we should do that has the best return on investments with employees. There are no city funds involved in this. This is a purely voluntary thing by the employees and we have First Financial to keep up with the paperwork trail, which is tremendous for a 457 to make sure we stay in compliance with the tax laws.
And the expense ratio, once you get to $10,000, is about 1/10 of what we were paying, so.
Yes.
The expense ratio that you charge...
So there is a cost savings for the employee at a certain point in time?
It's higher at lower values and then goes...
We only have about 25 employees who are actively involved in this. Danny and I have actually discussed some options for encouraging some other, some new employees to invest and perhaps to get people to increase their investments. There's some Roth options and other things that we can do. There are some tax credits available for low, what did you call it? Low income savers that we think perhaps maybe our employees aren't completely aware of. So we want to make them aware that they can receive those and that's part of this package.
Any other questions for Christie or, I'm sorry, I forgot the name?
Danny Doss.
Danny Doss regarding this? This time, I'd entertain a motion to adopt a resolution to move employee retirement investments referred to as a 457 plan from the Hartford Group to Invest Trust, which will be administered by First Financial Administrators.
So moved.
We have a motion by Mr. Hewlett, requires a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Parsons. Any further discussion regarding this? All in favor of adopting the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Doss. Item number 9, consider appointments to the Granbury Television Advisory Board. Pursuant to the ordinance, Granbury TV Advisory Board shall consist of five members from the community at large. Each member shall be a resident of Hood County, but at no time shall a majority of the members not be residents of the city or the owner of a business within the city limits of Granbury. We have four current members who have expressed an interest in signing back up and being reappointed. Those names are Mark Grella, who is the current chairperson, Dixie Lee Hedgecock, Kevin Myers, and Judy Gentry. Along with, we have a new appointment request by Brian Jackie Solomon to serve on the TV Advisory Board. All members have been vetted by staff to be qualified to sit upon the board. One of these vacancy was left by Steve Fortner's resignation sometime back. We've placed several ads in the newspapers and this is what we have going forward. So with that, I'd entertain a motion to reappoint Mark Grella, Dixie Lee Hedgecock, Kevin Myers, Judy Gentry, along with a new appointment of Brian Jackie Solomon to the Granbury TV Advisory Board.
Is it Jackie? Is it Jackie? Is it?
This is Jackie Solomon who works in the IT department?
Yeah, we felt like he would bring some IT experience.
Oh, man, okay. I'll make that motion matter.
All right, we've got a motion by Mr. Allen, needs a second, please.
Second.
Second by Mr. Couch. Any further discussion regarding this? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That takes care of that. Motion passes. Well, that brings us to item number 10. Discuss and consider this and select a mayor pro temp for year 2012 to 2013. The charter does require that the city council elect its mayor pro temp during the first regular meeting, which we are at, following the conclusion of the annual municipal election. The council did canvass the municipal election during a special meeting of November 19th. Thus, this is our first regular meeting following the election. Entertain a motion for nominations for mayor pro temp.
I nominate Nan Hewlett.
We have a motion for Nan Hewlett. Any other nominations?
I nominate myself.
Mickey Parsons nominates himself, so we have any other nominations? All right, I'm just gonna pop it out there. All in favor of Nan Hewlett, raise your hands, please. We have three. All those in favor of Mickey Parsons, raise your hand. There's two. Looks like mayor pro temp duly nominated.
All right.
Mr. Hewlett.
Can I sit in your seat there?
I'll try to miss a few meetings so you can take over, sir. Joining the motion, accept the nomination, appoint him. At this time, I'd entertain a motion to appoint Nan Hewlett as mayor pro temp for the year 2012 to 2013.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Parsons, needs a second.
Second.
A second by Mr. Perkel. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Congratulations, Mayor Pro Temp.
Pay raise?
Yeah, you get to take over a year. I'll try to miss out on a few meetings. All right, item number 11. Consider appointment of council member to the board of directors of Granbury Historic Properties to replace outgoing councilperson Mitch Tyra. At this time, I'd entertain a motion for...
I nominate Mr. Gary Couch.
Oh, well, okay. We have a nomination of Gary Couch. Any other nominations? With that being said, entertain a motion to appoint Gary Couch to the Granbury Historic Properties Board of Directors.
So moved.
We have a motion by Mr. Parsons, a second by Mr. Allen. Any discussion on this? All in favor of appointing Mr. Gary Couch, our new member, to the Historic Properties Board of Directors, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item number 12. With a new city council comes the adoption of city council rules of procedure, so discuss, consider, and adopt city council rules of procedure for the years 2012, 2013. Guys, I looked through them again, as I always do, and I would like to propose a few changes. I noticed that in the table of contents, there is not a section 4.1, but it is listed as 4.1 and just put in its place for future use in its place. Under section 2, Meetings, 2.1 section, it states that a meeting shall begin at 5:30. I think that's a typo. It's been 6 o'clock since I've been here.
Where's that at, Mayor?
This is 2.1, section 2, 2.1. Change from 5:30 to 6:00 PM unless you guys... I don't know what it's from, but I caught it this time. Another area is 5.5, Call for Recess. It currently reads the council may recess at appropriate intervals during the meeting agenda. I'd like to add the, strike council and add in presiding officer may recess, as you just saw us do. Sometimes I, I know we've got an attorney out there and it's probably best the presiding officer take, take on that role.
What was that, Mayor?
This is 5.5, Call for Recess. Strike the word council, add in its place, presiding officer. Another place is 6.2. I'd like to see the additional language of, all agenda items must be submitted to the city secretary in the form of an email and shall include a request for or, excuse me, include any related attachments. And the rest of the language remains, but we've started a process. Under the current rules of procedure, it was never outlined about emailing in any requests and I, I think it's a good way of tracking those requests and...
Own it, Mayor. Maybe in a different section, but like mine was on there, item number three and on our deal, it was requested by Tony Allen.
Yes, sir.
Is that gonna be on every council personnel or the mayor if y'all put it on and not a city employee?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. We'd outline who submitted it and, and this would give us a way of tracking that request. Let me see if there were any others. Oh, I'd suggest adding a section 7.12, call it parliamentary procedure and just outline that when not specifically addressed in these rules of procedure, presiding officer shall to the best of his or her ability adhere to parliamentary procedure. I have, I have nothing else in there. Yeah, 712 would be an addition.
Okay. Say it what you said again, Mayor.
It would be headlined as a supplement, parliamentary procedure with a period after and then it would spell out that when not specifically addressed in these rules of procedure, the presiding officer shall to the best of his or her ability adhere to parliamentary I think we've got it covered pretty much, but occasionally we seem to drift.
I got a question. Are these, I noticed on the website, there's a place for post these, but they're not posted. Is there a reason for that or should we have them posted?
You, you mean?
These government, city council, and then rules of procedures. It's just a blank line.
That's probably an oversight that just hasn't been transferred out to our web.
I mean, but there's no reason we can't do that, right?
Oh, no, we, we can put anything we want on the web.
I'd like to see them.
I'm glad you caught it because I, honestly, I've never looked for it on the web. I have no other changes, anything else that anybody else wants? Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, I did find one more. 9.2, it's the very last one. It says, "Public notice of information shall be made only by a public information officer, which duties," strike the word of, "can be assigned by any, to any staff by the city Striking the word of out of that sentence. And that's my suggestion for changing. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the amended rules of procedure.
We talked a couple minutes ago.
Well, let, let's see if we can just make a motion to adopt the rules of procedure and then we can talk about discussion unless you want to go a different route. You want to discuss before we adopt, I don't care. It's just the motion. We talk about discussion after the motion and the second. Go ahead, Mr. Parsons.
On 2.2, Special Meetings.
All right.
I would like to see that the agenda item's on there or the only item called for the special meeting itself. And then in 6.3...
Hang on, hang on just a sec. We need to write the language.
That was 2.6?
So for clarification, shall include only these agenda item for that special meeting?
That special meeting. 2.2, I'm sorry, 2.2. Special meetings, special meetings are subject called by two members of the city council, the mayor, the city manager, the city secretary. In that way, we'll only be...
That way you would have more than one agenda?
No.
Basically whatever the meeting was, the special meeting was called.
It could be more than one.
More than one item.
But you can't add something after the fact.
After the meeting is called, you wouldn't add anything.
So we, we add a sentence to clarify that, shall include only, shall address only the agenda items called for that special meeting?
Yes.
Does that do that?
And then my other issues, 6.3 and 6.4, it talks about citizen speaking. I'm not sure if that just meant an open mic, but what I read that says is that a citizen would have a right to address this at, on any topic. And normally we reserve that to one, the open mic, and then two, only on public hearing items. So as a general rule, we don't open the items on the agenda to public comment. And I read 6.3 to read that citizens do have a right to speak on any agenda item, whether it's a public hearing item or not.
Yeah. If it's intended, they, they, we can say they would be down and they have papers, but I don't want them to...
That's a public hearing.
That's a public hearing.
They, they have the right to speak for that all the time.
Yeah. Public hearings, public hearings are exactly that. They're called for and anyone, anyone has an opportunity to comment. But in reading 6.3, a person may address the city council concerning items on the agenda in accordance with section 3.3. Basically it's saying that any citizen can come up and address any issue on the agenda. Historically, we've precluded that.
That's true.
Historically, we've allowed staff and presenters to address issues or people we called to the podium, but on a, on public hearings, of course, everybody gets to talk. Well, whenever, whenever we're considering zoning issues or whenever we're considering a flat issue or something like that, by, by rule or by law, that's a public hearing. And so when we have a public hearing, well, the mayor always says, "Well, does anyone have anything to say about this before we close the public hearing?"
Like the airplane hangar tonight?
The airplane hangar tonight, there's no open discussion with, no open discussion allowed.
And by there, they could.
They, they could have requested that, they could have requested that with one of those speaker cards.
Yeah, and it gives sort of scenario there where they could make that application.
I, I think, I think what we're missing out of that, if, if I remember back to what I used to read, it used to say that the count, the chairperson had the right to address that person or recognize that person and that language was stricken out, if I remember right.
Okay.
And, and I think that's what's missing out of there is some sort of language that allows the chairperson to recognize that person. Am I, am I missing that or is that what you're saying in my ear is recognition by the chair?
Yeah, the chair has the recognition, but always before, Mayor, the chair has, you've done that before.
I, I have allowed people to speak.
Yeah, you've, after you, after you, you know, said what, what the issue was and you've asked for any comments from the, from the citizen.
Well, it was like asking Mr. Gaffin to speak and Mr. Bill Scott as, as the chairperson. I called him up and, and maybe we need to just add some language that allows that option for the chair to request individuals to speak or be recognized. Can you pin something real quick? We'll come back to that one. Anything else?
Except for that.
We'll try to pin some language for that. Anybody else have any suggestions?
When I was looking through the, I think it was 4.1, the attendance of this council?
Right.
I think it was 4.4 or something like that.
I, I think you're talking about the, you know, appeal, appeal to the others?
4.5.
Excused from attendance, 4.5.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I don't know if we've done that in the, in the past and it's probably not, it doesn't, has, wouldn't happen right now, but it says for valid reasons. Now, have you, have they thought about, you know, excusing like a military leave or something like that or does that have to be defined that way? Yeah, well, sure it would, but I mean, I didn't know if you wanted to define it as free military leave or something like that. If, if in case you had somebody on the council that was...
Well, I think it's intended to, to keep people on the up and up as to why, in other words, if you don't have a quorum...
Who determines the...
Good and valid reasons. That's for the fellow council members to figure that out. In other words, if you're boycotting, I've heard of some city council members boycotting city council just so they don't have a quorum. And, and that leaves you in a lurch as far as trying to get some, some documentation or any kind of procedure.
And that's where, obviously...
And that's where...
Different than the corporate world, you know, we had people did that too and so in order to avoid that, there was outlined on what was a valid reason for coming to work or, or attendance, you know? I mean, it is...
You're thinking about maybe sickness or vacation or something like that.
You're wanting to define good and valid reasons.
I'm wondering, I'm just wondering if there's a need to define. I don't know, we haven't...
We haven't had an issue with that.
We haven't had an issue like that, so probably not.
Yeah, but it doesn't, I mean, does it address in the event that you were not excused, what ramifications are? So what?
Well, it doesn't, sorry, if you missed two meetings.
There, there's a section about compelling members to attend that sort of allows council to adjourn until you can compel the others to get here. But, I mean, to bring them in in handcuffs, I don't think is what we're talking about.
Well, like you said, we haven't, I mean, since we've been...
There are some cities where I've actually seen that, so. All right, Mr. Parsons, how about we add on 6.3, under citizen speakers, this language, it currently reads, "A person may address the city council concerning items on the agenda in accordance with subsection 3.3 of these rules, subject to being recognized by the chairperson."
Presiding officer.
Presiding officer, okay.
That's the word.
All right, you're right, we have used that language. All right, anything else that you'd like to see changed wise? These are rules of procedure for the year 2012 to 2013. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the rules of procedure as modified.
So moved.
We have a motion by Mr. Hewlett, needs a second and that second came from Mr. Allen. Any further discussion regarding the rules of procedure? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. There being no further business before this council, this meeting and junior's first one is adjourned.